I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, Monday, September 8, 2014. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silence for the victims of September 11th.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Madam Assistant Clerk?
Counselor Gerler?
Present.
Counselor Shabbat?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor Roderick?
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiris?
Present.
Counselors Aruda and Pelletier are absent.
Okay, the consent agenda. Approval of special council meeting minutes, June 30, 2014. Approval of regular council meeting minutes, July 14, 2014. No executive session held on August 12, 2014. Approval of executive session minutes, special meeting, August 21, 2014. Counselor DiMedeiris abstains, absent. Approval of executive session minutes, August 25, 2014. Counselor Lambert abstains, absent. Receipt of the minutes of the following boards and commissions: Conservation Commission, Economic Development Commission, Cemetery Commission, Planning Board, Recreation Commission. Correspondence received and filed. Wildlife Rehabilitators Association of Rhode Island Letter of Thanks for Support. Tax Assessor, Approval of Abatements. Attorney Brian Cunha, Claim Referring to Solicitor and Interlocal Trust. Town Administrator, Distribution of Monthly Overtime Reports. Town Administrator, Adoption of Policy for Code-Readed Emergency Notification Service. Rydot, Quaker Avenue Extension, Offered to Repurchase Land for a Dollar, Refer to Planning Board for Advisory Recommendation. Town Administrator, Distribution of Department Monthly Reports. Kate Micho, Planning Board Administrator Officer, Report for August Activities. Any items to be removed?
Mr. President, I remove item A4.
Item A4. Any others? Okay, I would entertain a motion on the balance of the consent agenda.
So, no move, second.
Denise DiMedeiris made the motion, seconded by Mr. Lambert. All those in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Lambert.
I've removed item A4 at the request of Mr. Robert, who had, who wanted to explain one of the abatement items.
Mr. Roberts?
Good evening, Town Council. Thank you for allowing me to present the abatement report this evening, pretty much staying with my policy in the past that if there's ever an abatement that I think needs explanation, I will come to the meeting to explain it. This one, all those fairly straightforward, within your packet, I did want to address it just in case there were any questions, because it is a large abatement. On your report, abatement number 35 through 58 is for the same account number and the amount of $11,292.43. Although we are processing this administratively as an abatement, all of that tax dollars that you're abating tonight is actually going to be recouped by supplemental billing, so we're not truly abating this dollar amount. What this is, is more or less an administrative thing, where we had one account number that had 24 parcels on it. We're trying to get away from having multiple parcels on one account. We want to have one-on-one relationships. So this one here, we're removing the 24 parcels and issuing 24 separate bills.
Okay, any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you.
I move that we approve item of the consent agenda, item A4.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, open public forum for announcements, comments, questions. Janice Gomes.
I bear good news.
Aha.
We were able to obtain a bus this morning from Ripley. It is a 2006. It has had the engine replaced. It has 56,000 miles on it. We will probably be picking it up either by the end of the week or early next week.
Thank you, and thank all those who worked tirelessly to get us that bus.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Roger Bennet.
There are two items that I've brought up to the council many times over the last 20 years that I'd like to bring up again in relation to building permits. The first is the fact that I think it's time that the town council approve a, an ordinance or stipulation that specifically states that nobody shall obtain a building permit that alters the building footprint on a piece of property without submitting a survey. I think it's high time that we stop all this argument in court when people say that there's so many feet from their neighbor, when they don't have a survey and they have no idea how many feet they are from their neighbor. The second item, that I think it's time to add a statement on the building permit itself above the signature of the applicant that specifically states, "Approval of any building permit shall not in any way indicate that either the building inspector or the town has fully checked this application against all town ordinances and all state requirements." The applicant is responsible for that verification. I think those two items will eliminate a lot of the court expense that this town has gone through in the last several years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearings and public presentations. Our Roger Williams Community Partnership Center. Kate Micho, Stone Bridge Reimagined.
Hi, Kate Micho. I'm just here for a quick introduction. I'd like to present Arnold Robinson and his students from the Roger Williams Community Partnership Center. We were very lucky here in the town of Tiverton to enter into an agreement with Roger Williams for their summer semester to look at the parcel that the town recently acquired at the Stone Bridge gas station, the former Seaside Gas. And the initial goals of this project were to ask the students to come up with some architectural renderings of the various uses that could be for the property. And really, the meat of the project was to gather public input on the potential uses for this property. And instead of going to the public with preconceived ideas, you know, "We would like to do this. What do you think of it?", to take a different look and say, "What do you think that we should do with this property?" So I think the students and the program, it was a wonderful experience. There was a two-day charrette that was held in July. I know a lot of people attended. There was online participation through a survey, through a website, through a Facebook page, and I'm very proud to have the Roger Williams Community Partnership Center here tonight to show you the results of their project.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Can I just ask that, if you can move your screen back just a little bit? Unfortunately, we can't see it.
We'll try our best, but another option is to move. But it's been pretty difficult to move this and get it, so both the home and the senior can see, so I don't know if it's possible. We have just an empty seats for just a few minutes while sort of this intro. So I just want to introduce, you guys can come on up. So making the presentation with me tonight will be Bill Langman and Juan Ocampo and Eric Stonewood, who was also a member of our class. We had a team of seven students, go ahead. We had a team of seven students, and we want to give you a walkthrough in about 20 minutes of essentially 11 weeks' worth of work, the total up to about 330 hours of work. So we're going to-
Could you please use the microphone so that people-
Will it detach? Can people hear me?
No.
Can the people at home hear you? Come on, hey.
I will try my best.
Can folks hear me now? Does this make it into the system too? Great. Thank you for bringing it up. That way we get it on the record. So as Kate mentioned, our primary job was not to design for you, but to engage the public. So to that end, I had a class of seven graduate students who were working with me, and the job was to design a way in which the public could give input into what could happen on the gas station site. And so that was the application that sort of Kate talked about. We broke that up into a finer grain, and our big thing was to really come up with looking around the country at what other beach sites with reused gas stations have looked like, designing a process where folks could come out and engage in a discussion, hopefully a well-mannered discussion, about what might happen on this site, and then produce illustrations that showed what might happen on the site for you to work with as you go forward for the site, as you look forward. So there's who were on the process. We were really lucky, a little hats off to Liz Colbert and Michael, who really helped us as volunteers, Tiverton residents here, and the town staff was great. We really had about six phases. The first phase was a lot of background research, which I don't need to tell you about, but we looked at your zoning, we looked at your conservation, we looked at all the regulations that touch on this site. We looked at your demographics, especially how Stone Bridge is related to the rest of the community of Tiverton, and found that it really is, except for some income and age differences, very similar to the rest of the town. That'll all be in the final report, by the way. We don't give this presentation and leave. We have about an 80-page report that gets dropped off for you to use as your next phase. And then we began to look at site analysis, and to sort of look at the site and tell us what's sort of most critical about this site and what's going on. So Bill, is that, you're dropping in for site analysis?
I'm taller than you are, so I will sit so that you can see the screen. I'm Bill Langman, RWHP Masters.
The site location. We looked at the zoning, we looked at how it fit into the context of the surrounding area. We looked at the building, the structure.
Slide a little bit. Thank you. Now I can see it now, too. We looked at the gas station, the structure itself. We did a architectural and structural survey of it. It's, to no one's surprise, it is a 19 late '60s, early '70s style gas station. You have removed the tanks if it was for possible reuse. We also looked at the beach around it, looked at it from the context of how it fit in with the gas station, and we looked at the, I'm going to call it the abutment, which we know is well in 90-some percent of its own planning stage for construction next year, but how it played into the area, the impacts of the vehicles and parking on the beach and the That's your, what do you call that? The break, break, I'm not from near the water. I'm sorry. And like I said, the bridge abutment, and tried to understand it in context of the three parts in the area and what we perceive the community would see it as. And of course, the Doughboy Park, which is really the nicest of the components. We also looked at the past, documented the history of the area, what its use was, you know, discovered it was a man-made beach. It was quite a causeway at one time, quite a central location of the area. We also looked at recent proposals that had been worked up for the area, so what other people had thought, what possible reuses for the area. We then began the pre-charrette work and findings for this project. We wanted to know what we could from the surrounding, Tiverton and area residents. We did several site vicious visits. We tried to identify issues that would, could impact whatever the community wanted to do with it. We looked for precedences in other areas around the world for a site, a gas station site near water, and we did, tried to do a very heavy promotion and pre-engagement of the community in the charrette. Now the survey results. I will stay very 5,000-foot level on this, but we found out that along with the census data and everything, that there's not much of a demographic difference between the surrounding communities, and the responses we got from the communities were pretty evenly distributed with the adjacent areas. We found out that close to half the people have not used the beach, that, and understand on the survey, it's not a statistically valid number. We didn't reach anywhere near the amount that you could claim this to be, you know, an empirically proven survey, but it was, you had to go do the survey, you had to take the action. So it's concerned citizens, involved citizens, someone that had something to say. Over half of them have not used the beach. Also, when we asked them to rank the most positive outcome, beautification of the area came up. Beautification of the area is a term that cannot be empirically proven, but it's a, it's surrounding sense of place or an emotional attachment or impression of the place. That was by far the largest or most positive outcome that the group of concerned citizens felt could come from such a redesign. And then the benefits that could result, from a redesign, positive benefits, and watch for the high yellow spikes. A more aesthetically pleasing environment was by far the largest response. Once again, emotional, but it shows that the community has a tie to this place, they have a feeling for it. And then preference for future use of the gas station, demolition of the structure, the 19 late '60s, early '70s building once again came out. 52% said, "Let's get rid of the building." You had us, you had 40% looked at second best would be repurposing of an existing structure, but if you go over to the gray column, leasing it to a community business was one of the most least desirable outcomes that the respondents thought. So you have somebody that wants the area to be beautified, they want it to be aesthetically good, and they're not too concerned about the economic ramifications of not replacing a business with a business. And then if you could improve Grinnell Beach, the following improvements. Improve the changing stations, or the bathhouses, whatever they call them. Rank the highest of the responses. And then the charrette. You take over now?
So we took all of the information that came off the survey, identified the issues that people had identified as most meaningful, went out, looked around at what other communities had done to solve similar problems, and all of this was essentially preloading for the charrette, was getting ready to engage folks to come in and talk and do drawings together and really think about what, and have a conversation with the community. We were very happy. We had a total of 94 citizens come, not counting us, who came to the three workshops that we held, and that's a really good amount of people. The Friday was the most popular day by far that we had, so we had three days, and really with limited time to work with you, we had two key objectives that we wanted to get out of this. The first was generate ideas for what the gas station should become. What's the use that goes there on the site? And the second is produce drawings that you can use for people to react to as you continue to debate this and talk about the future. So it was at Fort Barton School, right down the hill. We set up, people worked in stations, we didn't sleep a whole lot, but people generated idea after idea after idea, which you can see on the right. And the key was then sorting through that and saying, "What's most important? What do you most want to see happen on this site?" That continued through Friday night, that continued into Saturday, where people came together, and on to Saturday, into final presentations and final drawings, which we have here tonight. And really, it gets into the outcomes from the charrette. It was great to gather survey data, it was great to get a sense of the issues, but it needs to be boiled down into action steps that you can all react to, to move forward. So I want to highlight what we did. In your initial request to us, you said recommendations. In the end, we didn't do recommendations, we did four scenarios that you can move forward with, which Juan is going to present. And the reason is, is that we found that there were things that weren't mutually exclusive. It wasn't as easy as you pick A, B, C, or D, and you move on. There are elements and moving pieces that you can have happen on this site, some of which may happen on their own, some of which are use-dependent on the building. So they can be combined, and that can be part of your dialogue. There also, quite frankly, weren't enough people at Saturday's session for us to do preference voting, which we usually do, where we post all the ideas and then you get to vote your conscience. You're probably going to have to do that as part of your next steps, is sort of picking what's most important to you. So we don't have recommendations, but we've got four very clear scenarios with four different uses and different approaches to the site, which we're going to show you right now, and you can use that as your base. So I'm going to ask Juan to come up and talk about all those scenarios, their key points, and then show you some images. We also have boards that we'll leave behind for you to take a look at.
Hello, Juan Ocampo, Masters of Architecture. So scenario one was to remove the gas station, and it's a park design with pathways that will lead to the beach, with accessibility, also paths, low plantings, as open pavilion in the center for the park use, and it improves the change in the shower facilities that you currently have, so it's an improvement to that. You can see that, adds additional parking, like we said, a new bathhouse for the showers, and the pathways that will lead to the beach with multiple entries from the street and separating the fishing area. Again, like Arnold said, this is something that we could combine with different, you can combine with different scenarios. And some precedent studies, as you can see, sort of what the outcome of a new bathhouse could take on. Some design sketches. Paying, a pay station for your parking, so you could receive revenue, so you could park and pay, pretty much a sticker, and then it could take care of itself. Outside shower facilities, washing your feet, taking a quick shower after bathing in the sea. Scenario two, remove the building and give the beach a more natural look, more naturalistic, more trees on the site, restore the beach dunes and improve the sand, so no buildings on the site at all. So you can see it's more of a naturalistic approach, beautification again. The trees and the natural paths, again, will all lead out to the beach, and you still have the parking usage. And some precedent studies also from Jacobs Beach in Connecticut, what we looked at. Scenario three, it rehabs the gas station for flexible uses. It can be used, many things that we looked at, food vending, beach equipment rentals, and our gallery, a small restaurant, the Harbor Masters new office or storage area. It's also designed for short-term parking near the building, pedestrian pathways that connect to the attractions and to the beach, low plantings, and then also, again, this one will improve on the changing room and shower facilities. Some precedent studies also that has been done before near these sites. Coffee house, small restaurant. There's a rehab gas out in St. Louis, Missouri, and that's, you know, before, after, what it can take. Another gas station rehabbed. So here's some scenarios that we came up with during the charrette study of what the outcome could be with bathroom facilities and different usage. And again, here's the plan, same park, scenario one, but more of a driving way with the gas station where it currently sits just refixed, and same parking scenario, just more of a facility for rental usage again, or other uses. Some other sketches for what could be. The gas station with sort of like a lighthouse on the top. Scenario four, improves on the fishing facilities. This will limit the vehicle access, gate-to-mark entrance area, and welcome for the fishing, fishers. There's a parking for fishing area users only, improve equipment to support fishing, and cut down on your trash and waste. Trash cans, fish line disposal containers, fish cleaning stations, possibility with seasonal water, and fish waste disposal containers, possibly refrigerated for resale by the town. So it keeps your beach cleaner, because we know that's an issue that came up that's currently going on. So some fishing, cleaning stations that we looked at as a precedent study. Cold storage, so it could be reused later on, and this is improving the fishing facilities, what's going on right now.
So in the effort to boil down what is essentially a two-hour presentation into about 20 minutes, I did want to hit on four final thoughts. I always try to give the, if you walk away with nothing else from this presentation, one thing that we found during the charrette was that a big issue for folks was not so much the use or design, but it was the question of whether there is a building blocking that view or not, was a huge question. And so there was desire to, yes, improve Grinnell's Beach, there was a desire to think about what might happen, but one that I think the primary debates you're going to have to have is, that gas station sits up high and it blocks the views. And so if that is the primary concern of the town, then you sort of are heading down the avenue of demolition. Wow, the power I have to knock things off the wall with thought. But, so really, that is going to be issue one. Thinking about what is your view of the waterfront plan, what is your value of view corridors? Because if you do that, if you clear that view out, it means that you are preempting using that building or building another building on that site, which is a loss, you know, that you're not having functional space. But that's the town's call to make, that's your decision to have. So that will really drive a lot of things. How precious is that view corridor to you, looking out over the water as you're walking or driving? The second thing is that this gas station, since 1971, has been separated from town-owned properties. It has not had a connection to it. And yet, it can be one of the most amazing linchpin assets of your waterfront by now reconnecting it to the beach, across Main Road, connecting it to the park. So where it has been sort of a separator, now it can actually be the joiner, whether you have a building there or not. But the key is to take advantage of getting rid of that guardrail that blocks the access, to making it accessible by steps or by ramps down to the beach. So Grinnell can get better, that space can get better, the views can get better, but connectivity is everything. That came out of our charrette. Third, demarcation of pedestrian bathing and fishing areas on Grinnell's Beach is critical. Right now, there's real confusion over where do you park, how far up on the beach can you pull, can I drive in the water with my car? And so that is really a big factor. Take advantage of this to think about the way the beach functions. And the final one was a big issue that came up throughout our charrette, was sort of the 800-pound gorilla in the room, was conflict between people fishing and conflict between people walking and bathing on the beach. And there are ways to solve that problem. Scenario four can be put in place no matter what you do with the gas station parcel. But one of the things that we talked about is that that right to fish, you know, riling constitutional issues, access to the water, you're probably not going to make that go away. Manage it as well as you can. And so we've given you best practices that come up from other communities to mitigate conflicts with fishing and other beach uses. So we hope that's helpful as you go forward. So those are our sort of final thoughts. This will be available, we have copies, the town can post this on the website. I'm happy to come back to any subsequent events you have, if you think that would be useful. We'll also leave behind three full-scale drawings of this, so you can either post it, people can put comments up, but it was a great experience for our students, and we hope it was a helpful dialogue for the town. So thank you for having us in.
Thank you for your hard work and the presentation, all of you. Is there any questions from the council?
I think the other one's working. Give it a tap. Good evening. I just wanted to take a few minutes to bring up the citizens and the council as to the status of the Tiverton Wastewater District. Today was moving day. We have moved into our new location at 86 Main Road, and so we are officially in business. So if you have any questions, we also have a website up, it's TWWD.org, so for Tiverton Wastewater District, TWWD.org.
Is there a phone number?
We are proposing to keep the same phone number that the town has, that would be 625-6701, and that, all of that information will be posted on the website. So since our last meeting, we- So since our last meeting, we had three meetings with the neighborhoods, Riverside Drive, Bay Street area, and Robert Gray area. And we learned a lot from those meetings. The first one was Riverside Drive, it was kind of our first one out, and we've got a lot of good input from the citizens. And we, it allowed us to fine-tune our message and to tweak our offering to the citizens before the vote. One of the things that we did was, that we heard, was that we asked, like at the Riverside Drive and the Robert Gray area, we asked everyone to vote for the first three years of program. And obviously, the question came up, well, we know what kind of funding we have for year one. We got $7.1 million, and 44% of that is grant, and 56% of it is loan. But we don't know what our funding will be for year two and year three. And one of the things that was brought up was that we were asking people to vote basically for the whole program, and those people who were going to participate in year two and three and beyond did not know what they were going to have to pay. So one of the tweaks that we made to the program is that we're only going to ask the people to vote who would participate in year one. So that is approximately 230 to 250 people. So it's around 83 people at Riverside Drive, 83 households, let's say, at Riverside Drive, about 20 to 25 households at Robert Gray, and 123 households in the Bay Street area. So at this time, that's where the funding is earmarked for, and so those, therefore, those would be the only people that would be voting. And so next year, we will apply for funds, we will secure monies, grants, loans, whatever. And then when we have those commitments in hand, then we will go out to the residents that were planning for year two and say, okay, here's the program, this is what you would pay, and then it's their decision again. So that was a good tweak. One of the other concerns were people who just did not have the capacity to pay. The fee with the assessments and the user charge that we would pay to Fall River and administrative charges adds up to approximately, for the first year, approximately $125 a month. And for people on a fixed income or elderly people that just can't swing it, what happens? What happens with those folks? And so we went to church community housing, and there's a couple of programs there. One is a program that they have as a loan program. And so at the assessment, for instance, is, the assessment part of it is $17,000 total. An applicant would be able to go to church, community housing, and if they met certain income levels, or elderly and met income levels, that they could essentially get a, if it's elderly, an interest-free loan that you could make payments on or would not have to make payments on if you couldn't afford it. But basically, when the house sold, then the loan would be settled. So if you're elderly and you meet a certain threshold for income, that program is in place. And so then, they would only have to pay the user charge that we have to pay to Fall River and the small administration charge. So we're looking for ways to make it affordable as we can. If it's not elderly, then the interest rate is 3%, but it still doesn't have to be settled. Payments don't have to be made at that time if one can't afford it. And again, it would be settled upon sale of the house. So Church Community Housing is working with us to try to mitigate issues of affordability. And that's what they do. Their mission is to get people in safe housing and affordable housing and keep people there. So that was the help. One of the other things that has come up was the idea, people are a little bit confused as to whether or not there's a do-nothing option. And so I touched base with Rhode Island DEM, the executive director, and I've been in contact with them. And I just wanted to reiterate that there is not a do-nothing option, that DEM has known for several years that we've been going through trying to put this program together, trying to secure financing and a plan to extend sewers to the area. And so they have held off on notifications and notices of violations to the residents pending knowing that the sewers were coming or could come. I just want to reiterate that if there's a yes vote, then those folks that are in violation won't be bothered by DEM because the sewer is going to take care of the issues. And we have until 2020 to get those done, especially with the cesspool act. We're hoping to build sewers every year pending approval from the residents. However, if there is a no vote, then we continue with the current wastewater management plan that the town has in place right now, which calls for inspections. And those inspections would happen to the community, and if there's failures, then those failures would go through the channels of going to DEM, and the residents would have one year to remedy the situation at their cost. So that means that if it takes a $20,000 septic system or a $60,000 high-tech system, then that would, basically, a no vote means that you're on your own. And that's the wastewater ordinance that we're under right now. But there is not an option of doing nothing. There is not, Rhode Island DEM has assured me that that's not an option for them, that they've been very patient and understanding, but they feel like we have a viable program in place. We've secured $3 million in grant, $4 million in a low-interest, 40-year amortization loan. We've done all the things that we can do to make this as palatable as we can and to protect the public safety and health. And if the people don't want to do it, which is their right, then it'll be up to them to fix it. So what we're going to do from here is, over the next few weeks, we're going to go out and pass out information. We've put together a couple of documents that will be, that are in draft form right now, we'll be finishing them up. Frequently Asked Questions, there's seven pages of Frequently Asked Questions that came from the workshops, from the public meetings, to answer the questions that were raised there. And then there's another sheet, Voting Process. Who can vote? What's a yes vote mean? What's a no vote mean, et cetera? So we think that the real key here is education. So we're going to pass out this information. We're going to request to have one last meeting in the high school to bring everybody together to answer any final questions, and then we're going to solicit a vote. So that's where we are right now.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just any more specificity on when that first vote is going to happen?
We're aiming...
Like your target?
The target is to mail out the ballots and have them in people's hands by the 22nd and give them till the end of the month to vote. But we'll solidify that this week. But that's, the target is end of this week, no later than, I mean, end of this month, no later than the first week of the following month.
Mr. Shabbat?
I just want to mention that the comprehensive plan update, they are waiting for some information from...
We already received that there.
Okay.
And was submitted. I'm not too sure what happened, why it never made it into the hands, but...
Okay.
They complied very early.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick.
Thank you.
I actually have four things to add, just so that Leroy knows that we're trying to clean house, and you know what may be coming before you. There are some lingering issues with the transition from some of these town functions to the wastewater district. Number one is a resolution of who's going to continue doing the onsite testing program for the town. And I think what Leroy and I have discussed is a transitional period where we have a memorandum of understanding that the wastewater district would administer, continue to administer that program on behalf of the town. What we do after that will be a policy choice for the council. And that choice would be, shall we go out and put it out to bid, or shall we continue with an MOU with the wastewater district? For the short term, I certainly think we should continue with what we have, the staff is the same, they know the requirements. Secondly, there's some charter cleanup and some ordinance cleanup that is necessitated by this division of this function away from the town. And then thirdly, this is four, thirdly, we do have some transitional agreements with employees as well. So we have to clean that up and basically terminate the town's contract with one employee so that he can transition to his full-time appointment with the district and do that in a way that Leroy and I can iron out. Lastly, I only received these documents from the trust on, after the docket had closed for this meeting.
Okay.
But the wastewater district is requesting that they have an affiliation agreement with the town for purposes of underwriting insurance rates for health coverage through the inter-local trust. That will require council consideration and action. So that will be brought before you, I anticipate, the 22nd of September, your next meeting.
Will the ordinance changes also be available for the 22nd?
Yes, I think mostly what we're going to be doing is striking, so, but that, I think procedurally in this town, that is an ordinance, right?
Yes.
The decision to strike an ordinance is an ordinance, so we'll have to do the advertising. So I'll have to check with Nancy on what the advertising requirements are, make sure we meet them.
Yeah, it probably takes a little bit more time to get the ordinance stuff going.
15, 19, however many days it is.
Well, based on, it'd be 21 days, right? Based on, yeah. So it's not going to make the 22nd.
It'd be October.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for Mr. Kendrick's?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, at this time, I would move that we transfer item C1 under advertised public hearings, Ray the Bethany Shaker Riptide Sports Grill, to follow B2 and be taken for consideration at this time.
Second?
We have a motion, second in discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we're now, an advertised public hearing, Bethany Shaker Riptide Sports Grill, 1 Bay Street, request approval of BV liquor license advertised public hearing, subject to meeting all legal requirements, objections by residents in Bay Street area. Also a Victor Ling license, non-advertised, subject to meeting all legal requirements, and an entertainment license, non-advertised, subject to meeting all legal requirements. The town solicitor has asked to speak first.
Yes, Mr. President. There are some concerns with this application. There's a letter from the police chief, I think that was given to you so yet, or was that given to you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Recommending denial of the license. There's a bit of a history with the property, both the property owner and the applicant. So the police chief has recommended against it. I did call Court Chappelle, who was listed as the attorney for the applicant this morning as a courtesy. He indicated he was not able to make it. He had only found out about it from his client last week, he was not able to make it. My understanding is that they would like to request a continuance.
Yes.
What I would like to do is, I have a big stack of documents here that I really don't want to carry home again or carry back. We only did a lot of copying today, and might as well have some time so that you've got two weeks to read them. So what I'd like to do is just introduce these documents into the record, and then if you want to entertain, continue it to the next meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
I don't know if the applicant has any objections to that or what else.
Do you have any objections, Tavern? Okay.
Can you just identify yourself for the record, please?
My name is Bethany Shaker.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Tights, if you can distribute that?
Sure. The first item, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, okay.
And Ms. Shaker, if you want to be more comfortable sitting.
Thank you.
The first item is a copy of, this is a decision of the City of Fall River Licensing Board regarding the revocation of the license of Jake's New Time Saloon on Pleasant Street in Fall River, Massachusetts, where the landlord, the owner of the current building was the manager, and also the current applicant before you is identified as being the manager. And this license was revoked by the City of Fall River Licensing Authority. I think you already have, that decision was appealed to the Alcoholics Beverage Commission in Massachusetts, was upheld, the revocation, you already have that. is a transcript of the actual hearing before the Fall River Board of License, the show cause hearing before the Board of License. It was 2011, May 2011, it's in the certification. Yeah. There should be an extra one of the others. Item three is a letter from the City of Fall River Licensing Board regarding the show cause hearing, and it contains a police report attached to it by Police Officer William Philandis regarding activities at the establishment in question. And item four is a letter to Michael J. Baalbach, Special Investigator, Asset Forfeiture and Seized Property Bench, from Liz Pereira, Assistant Corporation Counsel, City of Fall River, dated April 27, 2011, titled Shaker's Bar and Lounge, Fall River, Massachusetts. And this is provided because it also provides a summary, the events in 2011 were not the only events. As you can see from this memorandum, trouble existed at this establishment all the way back as far as 1990, and there were several suspensions and warnings given during the course of the 1990s. Item number five is a copy of a search warrant that was returned from District Court in Fall River, together with the application for the search warrant and the affidavit providing the request and setting forth the history of what was going on in 2011, which led to the search warrant, the arrest, and the subsequent revocation of the license. And finally, item number six is, and it's the last one for tonight, is a series of reports of police calls to the location of the establishment over a two-year period of time from 2010, 2011, over 100 calls. Now, I do have to note, it was the location, not every one of these calls was for the bar itself. If there was a domestic dispute in an apartment above the bar, it's included in this list. But by far, most of them are concerned with some sort of public disturbance of the peace at the licensed establishment. So I'd just like to introduce those into the record. I've got a separate set I'll provide to...
I was just going to say, would you give the applicant, so she has a copy of it? Ms. Shaker?
And if there's nothing else, I wouldn't have an objection to continuing it to the next meeting on the 22nd, I think.
Yes. Okay. Would you like to add anything, Ms. Shaker?
Yes, am I also going to be able to add my own court documents clearing me of everything that's noted on that?
At that time.
I can.
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to continue this to date certain, September 22nd.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Motion in second. All those in favor? Motion carries. So, it'll be September 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, sir, we've continued the hearing, so it'll be on the September 22nd.
Sir, I was told to be here tonight. I was told to address this issue tonight, and you're telling me you're not even going to hear our comments?
Well, unfortunately, because she has requested, because her attorney is not here, she's requested that her attorney be with her, so we have to at least grant her that. So, it would not be fair to her to have complaints put forward without her attorney here.
All I want to do is express, as a neighbor next to the facility...
I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
Sir, I'm sorry, you cannot.
You cannot?
September 22nd.
So, you have all the time, all the weeks, and if I can't make it, well, that's tough. You didn't get my...
You can send a letter to us.
I already did.
Yeah, you did.
Well, then, good.
You did give us a letter, is that correct?
Excuse me?
We do have a letter from you.
An email, yes, ma'am.
Yes, we have.
We have that. So, if you can't attend, that will be entered.
Did you give me that date again for last...
September 22nd.
When?
September 22nd.
I assume that you're not going to send a letter to your brothers again?
No. Because it's continued.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, we will continue with the advertised public hearing. Public hearing amendments to Town Code, Chapter 38, Environment, Article 3, Earth Removal, Division 1, Generally, and Division 2, License Continued from the July 14, 2014 meeting, a Solicitor Memorandum on Town's Authority to Regulate Earth Removal Quarry Operations, and a Proposed Amendment Ordinance with Further Amendments Following Public Hearing of July 14th, and C, a Planning Board Memorandum. Okay, the advertised public hearing is now open.
Mr. President, if I may, just, as I've set forth in the memorandum, but for the benefit of the people who didn't have it or didn't see it online, we have researched the matter further based on the arguments presented at the public hearing before, which is the reason why we have public hearings, to allow people, everyone, all property owners, to have a point to express their opinions and provide information. And it would appear that, based on the state legislation, the specific legislation passed for the town of Tiverton, it does restrict the town. And it does not really give us the power to regulate the extraction of gravel, not, I'm sorry, gravel, but of granite, and the stone that they refer to, limestone, lime rock, or granite are specifically excluded, and no matter how we read it, I don't think we can regulate the actual removal of that. As I have noted, I believe that what was intended was to exclude the regulation of your classic quarry, where big slices of granite or limestone were cut out of a hillside and brought to someplace else where they were finished for going on a facade of a building, or becoming a countertop, or a statue, that that was the purpose and that was the definition of the quarry. So, to the extent that the current operations, if they're taking the granite and limestone or lime rock, and they are crushing it and breaking it up into gravel on-site, I think that is gravel processing, which is in fact, under our jurisdiction. So, with those limits in mind, I've done two things. One is, I have amended the ordinance to put back into place the previous exclusion on the quarrying, and added a particular language about that the, I've added a definition of on-site processing, so that that would be subject to it. And beyond that, I've only made a few technical changes to it. I understand that there were, I reviewed the changes that were provided by the neighbors, and I think that many of them would be good things to have to regulate it. But at the moment, I don't think we've necessarily got the authority to do that, and I am weary of extending the town's efforts to regulate it too far. I would also, the second thing, recommend that we prepare legislation for the General Assembly to amend this 1973 special legislation to deal with this in a more comprehensive fashion.
If you'll identify yourself?
Yes, sir. My name is James Tabak, and I live at 50th Linda Road.
James, could you just speak a little louder?
Tabak, James Tabak, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
I live at 50th Linda Road, and thank you for taking my comments tonight. The company which Tiverton Materials hires to monitor their blast routinely sets up on my front lawn, at my invitation. I'm happy to see that they're monitoring the blast and making these recordings. And the blast furthest from my house this summer was only 1,200 feet. The lowest decibel rating recorded this summer was 121 decibels. I think what we're trying to regulate here is a public hazard, and I am far from the nearest, I am not the closest house. There are a bunch of houses closer than mine, so you can well imagine how fast sound drops off. And it's 121 decibels, the lowest reading this summer at my house. We're trying to regulate a public hazard. It's not, it's just not a nuisance. It's destructive. And looking at the rewritten one, I still push because we've just grown closer. I mean, the streets are where they are, the quarry's expanding. There must be the ability to say, you know, blast all you want, just cut the charges in half, so what reaches our houses is not so violent. It doesn't seem to be too much task for, and when their own measurements, the blast furthest from my house is a football field and a third away, their lowest measurement's 121 decibels. And with the town ordinance being 60 decibels, and this being a routine way of doing business, it's just getting its hand kicked in our face. There is an ordinance passed with proper procedures. It specifically says in the ordinance, the Chief of Police will enforce this ordinance, but this is the way business is simply done. Noise mitigation, I think, would be an important addition. I think the, you know, no one's trying to stop people from blasting, but to blast twice as often with half the charge would get the same job done and not be such a violence upon the neighborhood. Finally, just this week alone, the mornings I was home, which wasn't every morning, twice they started by quarter seven in the morning, with the big machines and all the noise and things, quiet hours are until seven. You know, we follow procedures here. We do what we're supposed to do. Those limits, not making all this tremendous noise before seven o'clock in the morning, are ignored. There's no enforcement action in terms of violating the noise ordinance. There's no enforcement action in creating all this noise before seven o'clock in the morning. And I think we should follow our procedures here and hope for a good outcome, and enforce what's in place. And those are my comments for this evening, and I thank you for your time, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. No, I was just going to ask you to use the other mic. Just move it over to you. Okay, you can move on.
Good evening. My name's Bob Toulon. I'm Jim's neighbor, one house closer to the blasting. I've done a little research into the town and blasting. In 1985, I have the minutes of a town meeting, which states with Douglas and his attorney here before the council, that he would be taking his level of his establishment over there, whatever you want to call it, his quarry, down to about 10 feet above Stafford Pond. Well, when Douglas walked out, he was below the surface of Stafford Pond. So, the man is not a man of his word. To my knowledge, it was going to cost in excess of a million dollars to close that place in accordance to the town meeting. Douglas claimed bankruptcy. Are we looking for Tiverton Materials, who is now approximately 100 feet below Fish Road, to claim bankruptcy and leave us with waterfront property on Fish Road? In other research, I had gotten the new thing from your attorney. And in other research, you have a 34-page court document here, 1977 Cumberland, Rhode Island.
Do we have copies of those?
I don't have a split idea if you have this. I dug this up.
Okay. Unfortunately, you're going to have to give copies to the town clerk. She'll make copies.
Okay. And in a superior, I'm just going to make it brief. The citizens of Cumberland, Rhode Island, who were receiving damage, went against the quarry owners, and they took it to court, and the judge ruled on their side. And in the judge's decision, he limited, now, you must realize one thing, this man over here is blasting, apparently is blasting 50 foot down and maybe 50 feet wide each time he blasts. The judge ruled, and it went into the Cumberland, for Cumberland, that there will only be 14 holes drilled 14 feet deep, and a maximum of 2,500 pounds of explosives. This man over here is using 12,000 to 14,000 pounds of explosives. And the judge also ruled in this one that there will only blast once a day, and try to keep it at a minimum of twice a week. Well, they don't quite blast that often over there. They blast about once a week. And in going online to granite quarrying, your attorney is correct, it always refers to the slabs, they're taken out to be polished, they're going up in big blocks. But, if you would like to have peace and quiet in the town of Tiverton, eliminate blasting, and have a chemical called Dexpan, which is used in the state of Idaho. They're allowed to drill X amount of holes, so deep, they pour this chemical into it with water, it's nontoxic, and it doesn't blow up, it just cuts the piece and it drops. Of course, that costs them more money because they're not blowing it up into small pieces. But the state of Idaho has done this. I found it online. So, with the judge's order, I firmly believe that the town of Tiverton could restrict and make our ordinance stricter in the number of holes they can use, in the depth that they can go, and the pounds. When Cumberland goes down to 2,500, and we're allowing 14,000, and this particular quarry, since I took my pictures there, put up a no trespassing sign, so I do not trespass, I don't walk down the path, he's continuing to blast toward Fish Road, because he started out in the middle, if you recollect the pictures that I showed you, and his 50-foot wide wall is coming toward Fish Road 50 feet deeper.
Yeah.
So, it's not going to get any better for us, it's going to get worse. So, I would hope you would consider limiting the number of holes he can drill, the depth of his holes, and the number of pounds of explosives he can. And I'll, you can, you want this, you can have that. That's the judge's decision for Cumberland.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is...
Excuse me, sir. Sir, Mr. Toulon, he has a question for you.
You've had an opportunity to review that opinion. My only question was whether or not, do you know what the basis of the judge's opinion was? That is, was it a statute?
Okay.
Was it a local ordinance? Was it a licensing requirement? What was the basis for the decision?
It started in 1973. The basis is, all the citizens rendered complaints because they were receiving damage to their houses. The town of Cumberland, apparently, it doesn't say whether they took any action or not, but they got their own attorneys, and they took the action. And they had older homes, and if you understand homes, the days of the plaster walls and the plaster ceilings.
Yeah.
Okay. One of them in there described his first crack in his ceiling. So, what he did, he put a pencil line in it, and he took a picture of it. The next time they blasted, the crack continued, he put a pencil line, and he took pictures of it. Well, everybody started to do that. So, it was the neighborhood complaint that they took to court and got this, and the judge ordered all of these restrictions. It was not the town of Cumberland that took Fort Brothers to court.
Well, Mr. Tice, I think that's going to be one of our questions. I haven't had an opportunity to review that particular opinion, but whether or not those restrictions are based on some statutory obligation, or whether we're now relying on the common law, and whether or not Tiverton is in a position to...
Yeah.
...limit anything relating to blasting.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, it's 1977.
Yes.
Second of all, it's a Superior Court decision.
Yes.
So, it's not binding. Okay? Superior Court decisions aren't binding, only Supreme Court decisions are. And the Supreme Court in the Cardy versus Wes Greenwich case, less than a decade ago, has ruled more definitively on the earth-removal operations. And just briefly looking at it, it appears this basically was a private nuisance action by the landowners. And I know you don't want to hear that.
No, no, that's what I said, everybody complains.
But, I mean, you have the right to sue them, get together, sue them. It's not only a right, it's something that you have a right that the town doesn't. The town can only bring in action for public nuisance.
And I was also in front of, we have the right as citizens to sue the town of Tiverton for failure to protect us from damage and noise and dust and everything else. I don't think I should do that.
Unfortunately, you don't. I mean, the town, the town is doing what it can. The town is handicapped, first of all, the blasting is preempted. The blasting and the groundwater protection are preempted by the state, by the state regulations with the Rhode Island DEM for the groundwater, and for the fire marshals for the blasting. And the town itself, I wasn't here in 1973. That was probably a state-of-the-art ordinance, and it was, you know, it was a major move forward at the time. But what was adopted at the town's request in 1973 is what we still have to live with until we get it changed. So, unfortunately, this doesn't, you don't have to live with it. You still have the, to the extent that you are bothered by it, and it is a legitimate nuisance, you have that right to bring an action. But the town can't bring it, and the town can't bring it for you. We'll be dismissed for lack of standing if we tried to bring that action for you. We can only bring direct public health and safety issues.
So that, excuse me one second. So, the town meeting where Douglas, before he got his permit, said he was only going to come within 10 feet of Stafford Pond, and this man now is approximately 20 feet below the bottom of Stafford Pond, that carries no weight in the town of Tiverton?
No, because it's the Rhode Island DEM that regulates that issue of the groundwater protection.
They regulate the depth that they can go in this town?
They should be, now, throughout the state. They're supposed to regulate the protection and protecting the groundwater.
You haven't, we have no, we have no say, and they can leave us a 300-foot hole up there?
Well, and one of the things that we require is that they post a bond that can be, so that the property can be rehabilitated. And the people who bought this quarry know the number, and they know the number that's over a million dollars to restore this, because they asked for that information before they made a bid for it in the bankruptcy court.
Okay, just one question. In five years, can Tiverton Materials go bankrupt and walk away and leave Tiverton with a hole?
It's possible, but I would think we would be able to pierce the corporate veil in that case to the Lynch Brothers, because it's a part of the same operation.
Lynch is also running a corporation out of New York with a 21-year-old son, so they're all undercover too, just like, you know, Douglas was. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, what I'd like, I'm trying to get a clear understanding of this.
Not to interrupt you, but let's let our people finish first. And please use the other microphone, that one's not working.
Everybody's trying to steal it.
Use that microphone.
Only one works, huh?
Only one's working tonight.
You can just pull it off.
I want to cover two items this evening. My name is Patrick Finglis, I live at 46 Beth Road. I live approximately another 2,000 feet from Jim, who just gave you an overall indication of noise. I'm going to talk about the operating noise emanating from the particular facility. Now, keep in mind, this is outdoor operation, it is not enclosed in any building whatsoever, okay? I live more than a half a mile from that and in the back of my yard, and invite any youth, come over, have a drink with me, sit down, have a soda, and see if you can put up with it for seven hours or eight hours. It sounds like a freight train in my backyard when he is processing his rock. Now, I've had the police department on one occasion come over and at my property line do a sound level test, okay? Now, here again, they were very cooperative. The police officer that basically took it spent approximately 10 to 15 minutes, they did take it, and it came in at between 58 and 62 decibel levels on a continuing constant basis for that 15 minutes. Now, picture that 15 minutes over a six, seven, or an eight-hour period of time, it becomes unbearable after two hours. And you wouldn't be able to stay on my deck and finish that beer, you'd be gone. So whatever you're doing as far as the Two Avenue approach, please take into consideration, it is an outdoor operation, it has no air pollution control requirements, no sound requirements. And I don't know this for a fact, but if you drive by there, depending on which direction you're going, and you take a look at that, there is a series of derricks or conveyors. They have to be 50 to 60 feet in the air. We do have a zoning ordinance, I'm pretty sure the zoning ordinance applies to structures. A structure for an industrial zone is basically a maximum of 50 feet. Now, this is not a building, it is a structure. With that being said, I do have one follow-up question because I was surprised at the public hearing the last time because I did make a comment on a chain of ownership. And I think, Mr. Teitz, I'm going to quote you, where you basically did indicate that you would probably talk to me about that issue. I did not hear from you, and I understand you do have a lot of pressures in relation to me, a retired person who tries to read on his deck and can't read, that's a little advertising. But in the process, I just want to ask one question dealing with Section 12, and you're familiar with the new legis, not the new legislation, with the '72 legislation, did it have to be an existing quarry at the period of time when that legislation was passed in January 1973? If it wasn't existing, there are a couple of outs in there where basically, within 60 days of a period of time, they could file documents with the town showing that it was. I think you'll find that in Section 12.
Right. But the problem is, it excluded, that's fine for the non-granite ones, but this excluded the regulation of the granite quarries completely. So even, an argument can be made that even the requirement for the 60-day registration and so forth, they were excluded from because they were excluded from the definition to begin with.
All right. So basically, to some extent, after hearing their attorney McGuire last time, they're an umpire unto themselves in all practicality with the exception of one thing, the processing of the materials.
Right. Well, A, I would like to try to get clarification from the state if we could, and in the meantime, I would agree with you, yes, the noise from those conveyor belts and the processing of the stuff, I do not believe is exempt. Once they've blasted the granite out of the side of the hill, if they're running it through those conveyor belts and turning it into smaller pieces of rock and gravel, I believe that should be subject to this and would also be subject to the noise requirements. That's why I would like to see this amended to at least put that, put these restrictions into effect, go further than what we have before and make it clear.
All right.
Will we be successful? I don't know. We'll cite them and we'll go to court and argue that issue. But I feel at least a little more comfortable about that issue on the processing than I do on the actual blasting itself when the language of the statute says excluding.
All right. There's one thing that I do urge you to proceed with great caution with, and there's a section in here which basically I'm going to call an application process. The devil is in the details. Depending upon what you put in that section, I think it's 3883, I think you have to have additional things in there which takes it to consideration, are they going to have a building? Is it going to be an indoor operation? I see no reason why it shouldn't be. You can get some additional tax revenue. If you take a look at the assessed evaluation of that property in relationship to other property on Fish Road, it is basically incredible. I think I probably pay more on my residential piece of property, understanding that it's residential. But I always came from a different philosophy as far as industrially-sown land. I always thought industrial-sown land had tremendous value. His two parcels of land, which goes somewhere between 70 and 30, are assessed at an incredibly low level, that could be a very good reason for it, that I don't understand it, I'm not a tax assessor. But on the surface, it just doesn't make a tremendous amount of sense. With that being said, just be very careful with whatever that application is, whatever you do require of these particular individuals. And the other thing which is incredibly important is whatever is in there that the town has the ability to enforce it. I sympathize with the police department because that particular day, when they did take those readings, there happened to be two police officers there. What do you think they got a call for? They got a call for domestic disturbance. I just told them, go. I mean, we've got to be realistic. But if we got an ordinance, it deals with sound, receiving residential property, it's got to stay within those particular limits. One other caution, please take a look at 1.7 of our ordinance, which I think is basically the fine structure. I think that goes back to 1963. I mean, present value of a buck, whatever it's in there, make a change with 1.7 of the town's ordinance is dealing with the fines associated with it. It's a very old financial structure. With that, I'll try to respond to any questions.
Any questions?
I've been living with that thing for 29 years now.
We understand.
I hope to see you stop by. Hopefully, they're going to be operating because when it comes for assessed evaluation time, tax assessor is not going to step on my property until their full operation.
Sir, 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 what's your address again?
46 Beth, as in a girl's name, Road.
Thank you. Mr. Teitz, I also have a letter from Stephen Hughes, chairman of, asking for more time to review the changes to the ordinance. So I would like to give him that opportunity, give that.
And I would concur with that.
Okay. In addition, I would ask you and the town administrator to prepare some preliminary inquiries to our state legislators regarding putting together new legislation regarding quarries.
Okay.
I did have a.
No.
I haven't seen you in a long time, Mr. Bettis, and now I see you twice.
Now we know why you're here.
Well, that's one of the reasons. I'm familiar with some of the problems that arose when Douglas was doing blasting. And I reviewed a lot of the documentation and spoke with a lot of the people, had engineers from Douglas show up to measure vibration, shock, and sound. And I'm an engineer and a CQA, a Certified Quality Auditor. I have over 20 years of experience measuring shock and vibration and sound. And when I saw and heard all that went on with Douglas, I have only one comment. If this new operation is anything like Douglas, you better hire your own engineer because Douglas's engineers provided a snow job to the town. They did not measure things. They padded their instruments so that they wouldn't measure things. And they said, oh, look how low things are. After 20 years of experience measuring shock and vibration, it was very obvious they were hiding the shock and vibration from their measurement instruments. I don't expect you to understand all of that. What I'm recommending is.
You'd be surprised, Mr. Bettis.
What I'm recommending is that you hire a competent engineer to oversee what's being measured. And I would not believe the snow job that some of these people are throwing at the town in order to get by and save a buck and make a buck. So please, beware. A lot of people were hurt. They had thermal pane windows destroyed, they had chimney cracks, they had foundation cracks, they had all sorts of damage. And they were snowed by engineers who showed up and padded their instruments to show how little vibration and shock was being transmitted through the rocks.
Thank you, Mr. Bettis.
Please beware.
Thank you.
Hi. This one's not working either. Tom Ramatowski, Conservation Commission Chair. I just wanted to bring up a point that if they're really mining granite, that has a very specific definition geologically as a type of rock, and not all of the bedrock in Tiverton is granite. So it may be a possibility that if someone, a geologist, were to look there, they may be able to say that what's actually being blasted, what is actually being removed from the ground, may or may not be granite. You know, when you first go up through that cut on Route 24 between Route 138 and the little exit pull-off, that rock there looks like granite, but I've been told that's actually arcos, which is a metamorphosed sandstone. And then further up, you get into some granite, and beyond that, I'm not really sure what we have there. So if the word is really granite, I don't think there's any limestone in the town, or any significant deposits, but not sure exactly where the granite comes in and ends. And they may be into some sort of metamorphic rock or something else, especially if they're that deep, and that may be a way to control this.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Chief?
Mr. President, one thing I would just like, I know there's several issues here. One on the blasting and the dynamite, I would just recommend that we also include the State Fire Marshal's office on that because they have ultimate control over the explosives themselves. And when these complaints come in, the chief has a very tough time and he's trying to get out to do that. But the State Fire Marshal, by law, is also supposed to be involved in that. So just my recommendation that we bring them in on that also.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
First time, anyone else from the public? Second time, anyone else from the public? Yes.
Good evening. How are we doing tonight? Mr. President, members of the council, my name's Larry McCarthy, I was here a few weeks ago. Thanks for this opportunity to comment on the revisions that your attorney recently posted on the website. You know, while we agree with your attorney's opinion that Tiverton cannot remove the granite quarrying exclusion from its ordinance without a bill from the General Assembly, we agree with that. But we also believe that adding onsite processing as part of the earth-removal definition will not pass scrutiny from a review in court. You know, for the same reasons you can't remove an exclusion, you can't add new activities to that same definition. It's the same logic. Makes no sense that you can change, you can't change an exclusion, but you can add new activities. Now, I reviewed Mr. Teitz's memorandum, and he talks about the intention of the General Assembly in adopting this legislation in 1973. With all due respect to your council, without citing any support, you know, the memorandum just simply concludes that the legislature must have intended that the word quarrying was limited to cutting slabs of granite. That was the basis, I believe, for his recommended revisions. You know, I submit that that conclusion is not supported by the facts or the legislative history. The facts are that this quarry on Fish Road, the quarry that we currently operate, was blasting as early as 1960. Rock quarries throughout the state were crushing granite and other stones in the 60s and earlier. There's an article, and I will submit it at the end of this, my little talk here, there's an article from the Bureau of Mines from 1960 entitled "The Mineral Industry of Rhode Island." It's right on point. It talks about this Fish Road quarry being used to process granite riprap for a Navy base in Newport, for the breakwater. The quarry was being operated by M.A. Gomino, which is now out of business, but that company had a contract with the United States of America to basically make riprap. And you make riprap by blasting and crushing, and it's clear from that article that the quarries throughout Rhode Island, many quarries throughout Rhode Island, were blasting and crushing granite well before this legislation. I also have with me tonight, and I will present it to everyone when I'm done, an affidavit from Mr. Gomino. Michael Gomino's family developed that quarry in 1960. He worked for the company. He states emphatically in this affidavit that the company blasted and crushed granite and processed the granite for the Navy base in the 1960s. He also states that the granite at Fish Road Quarry was not cut into slabs and never was cut into slabs. That's the facts. Now, the reason for the legislation also supports our position. The legislation in 1973 was in response to landowners stripping away topsoil and loom from large tracts of land. It had nothing to do with rock quarrying. The purpose to now add a provision to restrict rock, you know, activities relating to rock quarrying that have nothing to do with that legislation is simply not right. You know, so in our opinion, that the foundations for the attorney's, your revisions, are simply not accurate. And I'd just like to add three final points, which really more delve into some of the nuances of the ordinance. First, the proposed ordinance has no effective date. If you were to adopt this ordinance tonight, it doesn't, you know, basically, it doesn't say when it goes into effect. As written, it would require business to get a license for activities that never before needed a license, on the very day that you adopt it. There's no grace period, and there's no, it also doesn't say when the license period begins or ends. I also suggest, I don't know if you have copies of it in front of you, but take a look at the groundwater table elevation language in Section 3862.1, I think it's on page three. In that language, it references some RITM regulations. I'll submit that those regulations have been outdated for 12 years. Those regulations don't exist. You're citing regulations that are 12 years old that were supplanted in 2002. I'd also take a look at subsection four, that same page. That section attempts, not attempts, it actually does, it incorporates the soil erosion and sediment control ordinance. Well, Rhode Island general law, and I'm sure your attorney can look it up, Section 4546.5 is very specific on the point. It says that the model soil erosion and sediment control ordinance does not apply to quarrying operations. That's what the law says, your ordinance says something different. These are just a few examples. I mean, I could go on to a couple others, but I'm going to, we've talked, you know, seven weeks ago. In conclusion, you know, we respectfully request that this matter be continued and referred to its proper venue, the Rhode Island General Assembly. A lot of unnecessary time and more legal fees will be devoted to this ordinance if it's adopted in its current form tonight. Since the town's already prepared to go to the General Assembly, it makes no sense, basically makes sense to see what they do before trying to cobble something together tonight without all the adequate information that you need. I thank you for your time, and at this point, should I give these to your clerk?
Yes.
Okay. And I would like to give to your clerk, I basically got two documents. It's the affidavit from Mr. Gomino, and underneath that is the article I referred to, which was the article by the Bureau of Mines dealing with the mining industry in Rhode Island in 1960. I think I have 10 copies here.
Anything else from the public? Second time, anything else from the public? Third and final time, anything else from the public? At this time, I will ask the town solicitor to provide, the planning board, the time they need to review this.
I don't know, I guess, do we have someone here from the planning board to find out? I don't know, I guess, do we have someone here from the planning board to find out?
Steve was here. I don't know if he's still here.
When would time be for the planning board's next meeting and to report back? So our meeting is the 14th, because of the holiday.
Is our win?
October 7th.
May I suggest we continue this to October 27th to allow, our meeting, our meeting is the 14th, the following week, but we'd be setting the agenda on Wednesday. Actually, we'd be setting it the afternoon of October 7th, when the planning board wouldn't have even met, so there really wouldn't be time to respond to the planning board comments before the next, the immediate next meeting. So that's why I would suggest the Monday, October 27th, meeting of the council to continue the public hearing.
The planning board's meeting on the 7th?
The 7th, yes.
Okay.
Meanwhile, will you look at some of the comments that people made here to see if...
Yes, yep. And obviously, you know, we have, we have new stuff too with this affidavit and whatnot. See what comes out now.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to continue this hearing until October 27th.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Just really quickly, Andy, I just had some other, as you take a fresh look at this, I had some specific questions. Can I send those to you? Comments?
Yes, please. Please do. Can you just send it to the clerk? She'll have the record of it, and then she'll forward them to me. Or copy, send them to her and CC me.
I got you.
Okay?
Yep, thank you.
Which is my advice always, so there's always an official record of these things.
Okay, we have a motion second, all those in favor. Hearing is continued to October 27th. Okay. Approvings and resignations. Resignation of Stephen M. O'Neil from the Personnel Board. I will entertain a motion that we accept his resignation with regret and thank him for his service to the town. Still moved?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor. Motion carries. Nothing under unfinished business, nothing under financial new business. Town administrator, approval of appointment of code enforcement officer Christopher J. Sinott, 50 Ocean View Drive, Middletown, Rhode Island.
Mr. President, by way of introduction, items G1 and G2 are obviously related. Separate procedural matters first, the consideration and action to be taken on my appointment, recommendation, and then, secondly, the contract itself. The third item in your docket was a fiscal impact statement associated with the contract. By way of introduction of Mr. Sinott, now, he comes through our Personnel Board process through the third round of advertising and selection and interviews that was done in connection with this process. The entire state, many of our municipalities, have struggled to find qualified people for building official positions. That has occurred in the town of Warren, in the city of Monsocket, and a couple of other communication charities in our state. In the review process, and I praised you of my thoughts on this, Mr. Sinott impressed me most overall with the fact that he was passionate about being a code enforcement official. This is a career change that he believes fits him at this point in his job history, and he has trained for this for a long time, and this is a realization of something, a life goal for him, which I think puts the town in a very good position. We have someone who's passionately committed to public service and doing this particular job. So without anything else, Mr. Sinott is here to answer your questions. I asked him to prepare a few comments about himself before you did.
Welcome, first of all.
Thank you.
And make yourself comfortable. Have a seat.
Okay.
And since this is your first time in this chamber, our mics are terrible.
Yes.
To speak up, and you're also speaking to a wider audience.
Yes.
So maybe the luxury of being face-to-face, let me know. So if you would just speak up and tell us a little bit about yourself, and we'll go from there.
Okay. I went to high school in Middletown, Rhode Island. I moved out to California, went to college out there, got into construction immediately for big developers out there. And I came back here the summer of 1990 and met my wife, or soon-to-be-wife, and I never went back to California. I live in Middletown today. I'm married and three children. It took me 16 minutes to drive here today, so, you know, some people leave the island. I've been in the construction industry for 27 years. I've been involved in every project you can possibly imagine, from home building, institutions, academic buildings, and I think I bring a lot to the table, probably more than a lot of people out there. I have several qualifications that I have on my resume, and many that I didn't even have a chance to put on when I sent my resume out on 7/10, as I found out about that at the last minute. I did attend a class on, Matt asked me to attend last week, and I was very informative on rapid assessment for emergencies, and I've basically already started the job, and I'm not officially started yet. I've been involved with a lot of big projects in Newport, one of them being Thompson Middle School. I was a clerk of the works on many different levels. Other projects at Salve, URI, so, you know, if any, I know you have the new school or new library being built here, but, you know, I'll be ready to catch that at the tail end of that, and any other future big or complicated projects, as well as all the home building. I've, I know what the contractors have gone through during this recession in the past seven years. Thank God, some of them are still alive out there to build our kids' homes and our grandchildren's homes. They've been through a lot. I know what they're going through. You know, they need help and direction, like I did when I first started out. And, you know, I'm here to serve the public and help nurture some of these guys, especially the younger guys coming up.
Okay, anything from the public?
Well, first of all, welcome. Could you just briefly comment on your kind of management approach and kind of working with the public? It's really important.
Okay.
I have to imagine that you, given your extensive resume, which was impressive, it's just kind of great to hear from you, kind of how you plan to work with the public, because that kind of one-to-one sort of relationship is really important here.
Well, I do a lot of volunteer time. I'm on the Middletown Building Committee. I haven't attended any meetings in the past couple of years, but I dug in at the beginning. You know, I never missed a meeting, because that's the town I live in, and, you know, I worked with Bill Marquette, who's not there anymore. But, you know, they're on the right path. They have a great group on the committee there, and they're doing a great job for the town. Until I see something pop up that I don't like, I'll jump back in, but it's pretty smooth thus far. As far as project management, you know, it's different at many levels. It's construction management, project management, clerk of the works, kind of all in one basket, depending on the type of project, but as far as, you know, from estimating, project management, building assessment, I talked to Matt a little bit during my final interview, and I know he's got a couple of projects he wants me to look at, and I'm excited to address those two kind of projects that are floating around out there still. Obviously, you can see by my qualifications that, you know, I can bring more to help the town as well.
Thank you.
Have you reviewed our zoning ordinances?
Your zoning ordinances? No, I have not, but I will. That's one of my first priorities.
Mr. Sinott, every town is unique, as you well know, and Tiverton is probably more unique than others.
Yep.
You know, one of the things that I think we look for is serving the public.
Yes.
And in being able to explain some of our ordinances, why things need to be done a certain way, as opposed to dictating, you know, we're supposedly a little more customer-friendly.
Yep.
So that's, you know, obviously, something that we look for, and to try to make it as easy as possible, you know, in building in our town.
Yes.
You know, there are enough hurdles between ordinances and laws and zoning and so forth, so whatever building official can do to make it easier, obviously, you know, and understanding and able to comply.
Yes.
With those rules and regulations, you know, that's probably a very important part of the code officer's position.
Yep.
So that's something that I think is very critical, and I'm sure that's something that Mr. Wojcicki, you know, will look at and emphasize.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm ready to make myself available, you know. I can be willing to meet a contractor, 7:00 in the morning, 6:00 at night, like I said. You know, I know about the area very well, non-conforming lots, all the problems that they've gone through. I've been through them for 27 years. I think I've seen them all. I've made my mistakes along the way. I've been, you know, I've had my bouts with building officials, and, you know, they want to educate you. And with the new coastal actions going on after Sandy, that's a whole new dimension coming down the road here shortly. But I'm staying in the loop with all of that, and I don't want to see contractors struggle. I want them to get a permit and build a building and get some buildings on the tax wall. I wouldn't want to hold them up at all.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Okay, Mr. Wojcicki, I will ask you the budgetary question. Does it fall within the budgets?
What, yes, it does.
Except that we're taking a position out of the budget.
Well, during the Budget Committee's discussion of the additional $10,000 that was put into the building official's department budget, it was suggested at the time that it would be part-time clerical help to assist in some of the backlog of the paperwork in that office. It was, in the conclusion, also mentioned that it would give the administrators some flexibility in negotiating a salary with a new building official.
I don't remember that being discussed.
But, but I do.
Yeah, but you weren't at all the meetings when we discussed it.
No, but at the end, when I, after I joined the town. The, the reality is, was pretty harsh going through the first negotiation with the candidate who we originally suggested. 62.5 to start, going to 65,000 after probationary period, puts the town of Tiverton right about in the middle of the salary range in the state of Rhode Island for this position, and right about where we are demographically as a town, right about the same level. The benefit package associated with this position will be the same no matter what we do. So even if we could find somebody who'd be willing to take this job at 55,000, we would still be offering the same healthcare package and the same retirement requirements that we would have everywhere else. So the primary impact of this, in terms of, on a cash basis, is the increase in the salary. Versus the budget, we would fall, actually, this year, fall slightly below the budget. Total budget for the department would be over the existing 55,000 salary line, but because the position's been vacant and only filled on a part-time basis by an interim for two months, and we have a six-month probationary period at a reduced salary, the net-net on this department, we should come under, slightly under, the budget. And then my future budgets will carry forward this position.
Could we ask Nancy to come out and just explain, because Nancy was very adamant about this part-time clerk when she presented this budget? And I just want to remember why...
Is she here?
Yeah, she's in the back. She said she'd come out if we needed her. Well, it was very important at the time, and I was at all the budget presentations, and it was very important, they wanted that part-time clerk, and Nancy fought for that part-time clerk.
Again, but if I recall the discussion, part of that was because of what we were dealing with at the time.
I do agree with that, but they are backlogged, and there was...
Is Nancy here?
I just wish Nancy could explain it, because I was at every budget committee meeting and at every presentation, and I don't remember, I remember how important that Nancy needed us.
Huh, see?
It won't be for long. I just wanted to remember and recall why we needed the part-time clerk, that $10,000 for the building office.
Right, that was to help cover when the clerk in there is on vacation and any backlog that had come up.
Do you still feel that that's important at the ti, at the time, you were adamant that we needed that?
At the time, it was the building official that was adamant, and yes, we did need coverage, it's not my, it's not my call.
Right, I, I was just trying to remember.
But it's the town administrator's call, not the town clerk's.
Right, but we were paying overtime for all the vacations and all the sick time.
We were using a part-time, and we were having to pay overtime for that, yes, that's...
So that was part of the money-saving strategy towards that?
But I believe, also, in the discussions with the Budget Committee and all, was that they were giving the $10,000, and if the council felt it needed to go towards...
I don't remember that, but I just wanted to remember.
Oh, I do, I think I was taking the minutes at the time, so it was, was pretty clear at that point that it could be used.
I think under a revised leadership and management scenario, we should be able to mitigate at least some of those coverage and, there's a word, and it's not, competency isn't the word, but workflow issues.
Remember, they were on a plan there that you were trying to do some backup or catch up.
And we had an intern for a little while, and...
Anything else from the council? Okay, I will entertain a motion regarding the contract and appointment for Mr. Sinott.
Two separate...
Two separate.
I move that we, are we appointing or are we ratifying the appointment?
Ratifying.
We, I move that we approve the appointment.
And ratify the contract.
We'll do that in a separate section. I move that we approve the appointment of Christopher J., and it's Sinott?
Sinott.
Sinott, to the position of code enforcement officer.
We have a motion second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion on the contract.
Can we talk about the contract? This is for, I'm sorry, I apologize for being late in the first instance.
I'm glad you do.
The contract is for a term of, how long, I'm sorry?
Three years.
Three years, right? Yeah, okay, so, we have a probationary period of six months, and there's going to be a review, and you're going to come back to us, all pro forma. It's pretty much the same contract we've been looking at for a while, right?
Yes, within that probationary period, Mr. Sinott must achieve all the necessary credentialing.
Oh, yeah, there's licensing for sure, right?
Yep. Certified floodplain manager and Rhode Island certified building official.
Is that, is that, is that certified floodplain manager something that we reasonably expect will be done in six months?
I believe it's reasonable, because I, it's a very lengthy document. If you've seen the study guide for this thing, it's 650 pages. A very large portion of it is building code and alterations to the building code to accommodate the flow of floodwaters and minimize flood damage to buildings. That's why this particular function is in the code... That's why this particular function is in the Code Enforcement Officer's department and within his job description, and is so closely related to the rest of his professional requirements. I believe in this probationary period, the only thing I gave a little bit of wiggle room to was, you know, the CFM exam has to be held within this period of time in order to hold Mr. Sinott accountable for that. But I have every expectation that it will be done within six months.
And it can't be like next week and then not run it again.
No, right.
Right, so, okay. The only other comment I have is there's a typographical error on the last page, the last sentence, "This agreement is executed this 22nd day of September 22nd, 2014," one or the other.
At least it's the same number.
That's right.
At least it's it.
Delete the 22nd. It doesn't say in the year, by the way.
I know, I almost said that, but I didn't want to ruffle anybody's feathers.
You may.
Okay, I will entertain that motion if there are no further questions.
Then I move that we approve the contract for the Code Enforcement Officer, subject to the amendment that we discussed, the typographical error.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion?
Just that, under duties on page one, it refers to an appendix A. I don't see an appendix A, and I don't know if it's required, based upon the next sentence after that.
Is that the advertised job description?
Yeah, that's the advertised job description. That's my, that's my, it's my error in pulling the packet together. The job description is the same job description that we've been posting with each round of advertisement for the position. It goes into a good, a little bit more detail. It's a typical job description, so there's all the ADA compliance language in there for lifting and ability to perform the position.
I would just ask that you forward that to the council so that we can put it with this contract. Okay, anything else, Mrs. Shabbat?
No, that was it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Councilor Gerlach, follow-up from August 25th meeting regarding Stafford Pond.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll be joined here by Mr. Ramitowski and Ms. Hilton from the Conservation Commission. If folks remember, we received an update and a set of recommendations from the Conservation Commission at our last meeting regarding, kind of, next steps with what we want to do with Stafford Pond and protecting its kind of water quality for the long haul here. Councilor Shabbat had asked a couple of questions, and I thought it was important that we get answers to those questions as soon as possible and make sure that we can continue this discussion. Ideally, after getting the updates tonight, we can hopefully arrive at some consensus as a council in terms of next steps, in terms of re-engaging the director at RIDAM to take these next steps and hopefully bring this sort of stuff to closure. So I'll just kind of tee up things, and then we'll bring in Tom and Tricia to add the color commentary, since they did and deserve the credit for a lot of the legwork on this. So, again, just to reiterate kind of what the recommendation coming out of the Conservation Commission is, we want to re-engage RIDAM for a couple of different things. First and foremost, we want to level the playing field between all motorboat users of the pond, whether they be coming in through the public boat ramp or whether they be residential, down to a horsepower level on those motors that are acceptable, given the water quality standards that we're trying to shoot for. The figure of 10 horsepower has kind of been that threshold that we've talked about, but getting everyone on the same playing field is an important step there. Another recommendation is that we want correspondents to come from the state, preferably the Rhode Island Department of Health, to any person that has property or butts the pond to remind them of critical state ordinances as it relates to no swimming bans and so on and so forth there, to try to make sure that we get a handle on any sort of swimming or water skiing or jet skiing, anything that might potentially put kind of human skin contact in with the water. And the other item that we'd like to discuss with RIDAM is that, that we install some sort of closed-circuit camera sort of system at the boat ramp so that we can monitor boats going in and out to ensure that any sort of horsepower limit is being adhered to there. So, that was the kind of recommendation coming out, did I, I got that? So then, Joan, your two particular questions, and the first was trying to clarify, when did Stafford Pond become a source of water per se, as opposed to just a regular old pond? And then the second question was regarding some state legislation that has kind of woven itself into the dialogue around Stafford Pond that was passed or attempted to be passed in the late 80s or early 90s that tried to define one way or another what recreation on the pond should or should not be. That was correct. So, in short, a couple of things here, and I'll start it off and then kind of hand it over. The backup that was given out as part of this is some really old enabling legislation from 1936 that was an act to incorporate the Stonebridge Fire District and to furnish a supply of water for the town of Tiverton. And really, I mean, it goes on for several pages. I think the most, one of the most pertinent areas is at the bottom of page 118, which is one, two, three pages into the document, section five. And it really just goes to, goes on for a couple paragraphs here, but the long story short is that not only is the Stonebridge Fire District authorized to obtain and maintain a district for the supply of water for extinguishing of fire, but also for the distribution of water to its residents, which, you know, if you read that, it's, you know, for drinking purposes there. There's a lot more stuff in here, but with that, I will pause and ask if Mr. Ramitowski or Ms. Hilton wants to elaborate either on that one or the second question regarding...
May I elaborate on the second one, because I have an answer for the second one, which I did not have beforehand.
We'll put them all together here.
Sure. Yeah, so if I may.
I was trying to hold back on my comments on that last one. I did bring my satchel.
The short answer is, I'm sorry, come, give me a minute. The short answer is there, there was legislation introduced in 1990, that's at the end of the packet that you just received, that would very succinctly, it shall be unlawful to operate an internal combustion engine-powered boat on that portion of Stafford Pond, which is located in Tiverton, Rhode Island. Enforcement of this section shall be within the jurisdiction of the town of Tiverton. Any person violating the provisions of this section shall be punished by a fine of $500 and/or one-year imprisonment. And that was introduced on February 14th, 1990, and by April of 1990 died in Senate Corporations Committee. And instead, there was passed a bill to create a study commission of 13 members, a special legislative study commission, to study the impacts of recreational use of Stafford Pond on its use as a drinking water supply for the town of Tiverton. And that commission went out of business a year later, January 15, or less than a year later, 1991, and we couldn't find any records from that legislative commission. So, that's, the recollection that there was some legislation is correct, but it never passed.
It was full of good news tonight. Well, I think if anything, it gives some closure to that, that sort of chapter in this discussion, because that has floated out there for quite some time. And frankly, I mean, we heard many of the residents in the two sort of public input sessions that the Conservation Commission chaired, that was brought up a lot, and we were operating in an informational void, and so it's kind of good to have that information now. Do you guys want to add anything to any of this? I mean...
And just a general comment that, from what I found in talking to some of the people about it, is that the same pipe is used for the hydrants and for the water that goes to the homes. There's one pipe, it carries potable water, it passes down the street. So, once they install hydrants, people are able to tap that pipe and then use the water from that pipe for domestic uses. So, once the hydrants go by, typically the houses that it passes are also serviced.
So, so a lot of that pipe was laid in the early 40s. If you continue back through the legislative records, you can see that Stonebridge continually, because they have to when they do this, had, you know, throughout the 40s, went back to the state legislature requesting approval in the bill, giving them the authority to go out to bond yet again to buy more pipe and install more pipe. So, that was, went on all through the 1940s. On this piece of legislation, and we weren't able to find what Andy was able to find, although we did find the information about it, we found out that, in the late 80s, actually in 1989, the town council did attempt to pass an ordinance prohibiting gasoline engines on the pond. There was a, there was a lawsuit, there was a temporary restraining order, the D E M came down on one side, two weeks later they changed their mind and came down on another side. The town decided to drop its lawsuit because they thought they were on the same page with the D E M. This is all, I found all, this former councilor, Dick Hart, actually had it, it's amazing, right up, including the pictures of the original signs that the town council hand-printed, and pictures of Council President Bud Lane hammering the signs in, and it's all there. And they thought they had an agreement with the D E M, and there are letters that go back and forth between the council and the D E M's attorney that we have an agreement, so the council, the town dropped their suit, only to find out that a year later, when the D E M went public with what they were actually doing, it wasn't what the town thought they'd agreed to, which led to the legislation. And at the legislative hearing, at the first legislative hearing for this, which was in the early 90s, over 100 people showed up at the, in the little committee room, a large number of whom represented the recreational and sport fishermen. And so, at that point, you had a small number of legislators from representing Tiverton and a large constituency of fishing folks, plus some residents who lived on the pond, where apparently the judicious thing to do was to create a committee, and send it off to a committee.
For die.
Hence the, hence the committee. We know that, in addition to the concerns of the residents who live on Stafford Pond, any sort of change in regulation has always been a concern for the larger recreational, particularly the competitive recreational fishing community, and they have a fairly loud voice.
I just, I just want to, I think it's important to be mindful of the history of efforts surrounding Stafford Pond and trying to ensure that it remains a quality water source for the residents of the town. But I think, it's one thing to be mindful of these things, but I think it's also important, or even more important, to realize that we still have an obligation to try to protect for the future. It's important to note that water quality standards continue to evolve as research continues to mature in this space. So, it's kind of tough to, you know, look back and, it's important to look back and see the context of things, but we need to understand that water quality standards have evolved quite a bit since then, so it behooves us to really continue to push for protecting the quality and the safety of the water at Stafford Pond. So, unless you guys have anything else to add, I don't want to belabor the conversation again. I'd like to open it up for, you know, council discussion, but really would love to get some consensus and, you know, enable us to move forward to re-engage the director at RIDAM, preferably before elections.
Again, I'm going to ask the town solicitor, but I'm feeling that unless we go legislatively, I think we're at a, at a wall, so to speak.
Legislatively, at the state level?
Yes, because I think that, you know, we've tried to work with the D E M, and they're going to cite that there are no laws prohibiting it, there's, you know, and so forth and so on. So again, only my opinion, and I'm not an attorney. But I think that legislatively is probably the only way that we're going to have any major impact. You know, they'll agree to, as they have, eliminating the number of fishing tournaments and things like that, but I think when it comes to horsepower and stuff and putting a camera there and things like that, I think that's not going to happen unless we have more, you know?
Yeah, I think, and, yeah, welcome your kind of thoughts on this. I think, you know, for the last, what seems almost two years, you know, one of the backbone of their kind of position on this has been, if it's equitable, if it's, if it's the same rule for residents as it is for the sport fishermen, or frankly, anyone who uses the public boat ramp, then they're, they're amenable to that. That is the key thing. And I agree with you, I think it has to be at the state legislative kind of level, but I think having a town council kind of support for that sort of thing is helpful as well.
I mean, I won't speak for anyone else on the council. I mean, obviously, I do support, you know, the water quality in this town or whatever we can do to protect it.
Yeah.
But again, you know, as these fine folk know, you can bang on D E M's door over and over and over again, and they're going to come back and say, well, that's fine and dandy, but we have the power to do this and we have the power to do that. You know, so again, unless I'm incorrect, Mr. Teich.
Well, it's interesting, this is the first I'm hearing about the 1990s lawsuit with D E M, but of course, it's not surprising. I mean, they, they did something similar. When we enacted this bill, they, you know, did nothing, and then they tried to get a temporary restraining order to get it to come into effect. They were denied that, and then they haven't done anything further with it, they've just kind of stepped back. I guess it won't surprise you to hear my answer is yes and no. I think on a state level, nothing will probably be done without it being legislative. No matter who the director of D E M is, no matter how sympathetic he or she may be to water quality, safety, the fact is, the D E M, the department, a large part of it is composed of the other constituency, the sport fishing constituency. So, I think it's unlikely without legislation from the General Assembly to have it on the state level. That being said, it appears that this legal issue was never decided. It was dropped, it's never been decided. So far, we've staved off summary, you know, a temporary restraining order, but that's just an initial thing. But I do think that we can continue and should continue to ratchet up our ordinances, and I think that's what we've been doing. We had the first thing with the limiting and the licensing of the fishing tournaments. I would suggest, you know, taking these recommendations from the Conservation Mission and, I think, enacting further local ordinances to increase the, right now, we exempt, for example, the fishing tournaments under six boats from having to get a license. I think any fishing tournament there should have a license. I think we should put some more of the ordinance restrictions in place, and they should be effective to everybody who's operating a motorized vessel on the pond. You know, and I know we talked about the idea of a gradual step down of horsepower limitations, to what I see eventually as both a small horsepower limitation, plus of the concern with the turbulence and disturbing the settlement. and disturbing the settlement. So, I mean, even someone with an electric motor, I mean, we don't want someone, they could have a hot rod electric boat that could, you know, still have a lot of horsepower and stir up that problem. As well as, eventually, I think internal combustion engines should not be allowed because of the secondary danger from spills from gas and oil. So, I would recommend both, trying to get enactment of state legislation and continuing to amend the local ordinance with some sort of phase-out.
And again, just a question. Would we be in violation of some repairian rights?
No, I don't believe so. Repairian rights do not, aren't unlimited. I mean, just because you own the repair and rights, that gives you use to operate the property, but not at the expense of public health. So, I do not think we would have a problem with that. I think, as indicated, it needs to be applied fairly to everybody. But I don't think it's a taking, I don't think it's a takings of anyone's right.
Mr. Gerlach, do you wish a motion or something that we support, maybe delving into more ordinances and have the committee and Mr. Tights work on some updates?
I, again, happy to put forth, you know, suggested motion here if folks are...
I also think there's virtue to keeping engaged with D E M, or rather, there's not, no virtue in not.
I think it should be two-pronged, whatever. I think, my personal opinion is that both paths should be in parallel.
May I?
Sure.
To temper Roger's point, I think that if you look through the history of our relationship with the D E M over this and the fact that as D E M directors change, the regulations change, the only way to ensure that it is fair and that whatever's agreed upon is permanent is to do it via legislation, because we have a track record that shows various directors have the power to change the rules, and that's not particularly fair. And while I agree, and I think it would be most helpful to have sort of a two-pronged approach, particularly when it comes to enforcement, I think it makes sense to work a little bit with the D E M first to figure out where we agree and maybe where we don't agree, especially around the areas of enforcement. Because I would not want us to be in a position of having ordinances that we either can't afford to enforce or, you know, it's just too much of a burden to try and enforce, especially because I think in some of these instances, it really is the D E M's and the Board of Health's responsibility to enforce those regulations. So, we might start with the D E M and then figure out if we can agree and we can get someplace what makes sense for us to have as kind of companion ordinances if needed, before we spend too much time on ours. Only to find out if we need to adjust them.
Hi, Bernadette.
Just one comment on the 1936 legislation. It doesn't mention Stafford Pond.
It does not mention Stafford Pond. And we have to be honest. We know that in the 40s, but originally, Stonebridge had a couple of big wells that they pumped from near the fires, near the police station on Fish Road. And that's originally where they got their water. And, but those wells, you know, didn't last very long. And the need grew very quickly, at which point they went over to Stafford Pond. And by the 40s, they were pumping out of Stafford Pond. We just don't know exactly which day they started. But it was, it was a long time ago. It wasn't something that happened in the, you know, 60s or the 70s or the 80s. It was a long time ago they'd been there.
Yeah, and it does mention in here driving wells.
And it does mention it...
Right, they definitely started with wells. And then the wells didn't produce enough as they expanded and grew. And at some point, they started tapping the pond, which that point is mid 40s, I would guess, somewhere around there.
All right, then, I would just suggest, then, that we ask the committee to come up with some ideas and points that they want to deliver to D E M, you know, suggestions, quote unquote, and see how they work. And then come back to the council and report to us as to, you know, what their response is or isn't.
Mr. President, are you comfortable with us working with the town administrator and the town solicitor to pursue a meeting with the director?
Yes.
Time is sort of the essence.
Yes, temp is huge.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Just, again, a plug for the Conservation Commission. They're doing a huge amount of work on this stuff. It's fantastic. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Hey, town administrator, excuse me, bids and requests for proposals. DPW Director Steve Lucci, town administrator, request award of bid for tub grinding services at landfill to Extreme Tub Grinding Services, Inc. For $360 per hour for year 2014-15. And pardon my ignorance, but what in God's name is a tub grinder?
It's basically a grinder that's 10 foot feet in diameter and a, an excavator, a permanent excavator comes and grabs all the yard waste, lifts it up and dumps it in it. It can grind stumps five feet in diameter. And it just, we have such a large pile, we need a grinder that large to get through it in a reasonable amount of time. So, they're common, they're common out there in the industry. But again, it's a big piece of permanent machine. We use both of our bulldozers to feed it and keep pushing, pushing all the material to it. And it grabs it and then go and makes mulch that we use as cover for the landfills. So, it saves us money in that regards.
I have a question. We had three bids. And can you tell us why you would rather go to Extreme Tub?
Yep, the low bidder was $310 an hour, I believe, All Island. They were providing a much smaller machine and a excavator on wheels, running and getting material and feeding it. I pulled up a video on the computer on it and saw it operating, and it just was, it didn't meet the needs at all. The next bidder was at, the next, high bidder was at $363 an hour, and that's the machine we specked out. And the low bidder was $360, so it was really, really close between the first and second low bidder.
Okay, and it's budgeted?
It was, yes, it is. Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the contract for, the award of the contract to, of tub grinding services to, I'm sorry.
Extreme.
Extreme Tub Grinding Services Incorporated of North Dayton, Massachusetts, for $360 per hour.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? I think it carries. Thanks, Steve. Okay, town administrator, discussion of approval of pothole policy. I think we should get a pothole.
We do, it's coming.
It's coming, I guess.
Mr. President, I have this item for discussion and consideration for council action. And I have three announcements to follow that. Let me offer a brief. When I first started here in town, I had the misfortune on my own of pitching the front end of my car into a pothole. Route 95 in the Pawtucket, Ataboo border, expansion joint. If you know where the mill is, they're right, yeah, they're right there. And I did about a couple thousand dollars worth of damage to my car. And I found much to my chagrin that the state of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth, says that you use their public highways at your own risk. Therefore, there would be no compensation coming my way of any form. If I'd hit the pothole on Rhode Island, I would have gotten at least $300 to make my pain go away a little bit. So, I was sensitive to the issue. And when I came to town and was working here, and a number of people in the late fall, late winter, early spring were complaining about potholes, one whole pothole in particular on King Road that had several victims. And I was told that the town simply did not honor those claims against the town, that we did not have a policy of compliance with Rhode Island state law to offer that $300 of compensation once we had notice of the existence of the pothole. And I thought that was odd. And so, when I reviewed the statute, it was clear that it is not a permissive statute. It is a mandatory statute. And ran my ideas past the town solicitor, and he agreed. So, in order to lend some clarity to what process we will use, this policy that appears on the second page of my memo would be in place. And this policy is the result of consultation with the DPW director on what really constitutes, in his mind, a reasonable amount of time. So, the first person who hits the hole does not get compensation, but they trigger a series of actions. So, we have a certain period of time...
So, what, do you drive back and hit it again?
Well, yeah, hit it with the other wheel. You get $300 for that one. But, you know how it works, is we are given, as municipality, a certain amount of leeway to actually fix the problem without suffering any damages. But after that, we would be on the hook for $300, capped at $300 per incident.
Only if the damage exceeds $300, right?
Well, up to $300, but not to exceed $300. And the only reason why I bring this up is, well, first of all, it's mandatory. The town should be in compliance. Therefore, we should clarify anything that's vague. But second of all, taxpayers pay for roads. And when they know the statute exists and they come to town hall and they can't find satisfaction, it is just another source of anxiety and negativity towards government, that we don't even know what our own laws say. So, I think that was, it was in the spirit of public service and providing people with what they are entitled to as taxpayers that I offered this policy up.
Any questions from the council?
No, I just, I think it's great that we're trying to clarify some vagueness here. I mean, it's a good move.
The only question I have is, in the event that you strike a pothole and damage your vehicle on a state road, what is the protocol for dealing with that? It's the same?
Yes, it's pretty much the same. You are encouraged to take a photo and note the location. And there's actually, on the Rideout website, there's a claim form and a process that you follow.
But we've got a, so this is just...
This is our claim form.
This is ours, okay.
So, if they get it on Main Road, it's not our problem.
But we would be happy to funnel them into the direction of resolution of their problem, clerk's office or wherever.
I, Mr. President, I just have one minor change, if you will, on the report form. On the second paragraph, if you could change the second sentence halfway through where it says, "Therefore, a note that vehicles registered in Massachusetts will not be able to benefit from this policy of the town." I think it would be clearer if we put, like, a note, "Vehicle owners with vehicles registered in Massachusetts will not be able to receive reimbursement or recover damages under, or actually, per state Rhode Island general law 24-5-13." So, we at least get the state law into this, that we don't cover Massachusetts vehicle owners that have vehicles registered in Massachusetts.
It's not just us, it's the state.
Yeah. So, at least we get that and we can send them off to the general law.
And I also think, I put that in there to be very clear, that Rhode Island statute doesn't reciprocate to any other state that does not offer Rhode Island residents relief. And since we're almost completely surrounded by the Commonwealth, that means that Massachusetts residents are out of luck if they hit a pothole on Tibbetson.
What is the policy in Connecticut?
I don't know what policy is in Connecticut.
We don't get much Connecticut folk round here.
If you could just do that one tweak, that would be great. Thank you.
Do you have that, Nancy?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Here, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we... Don't clean your glasses when you go to speak. I would make a motion that we accept and adopt the new town policy regarding compliance with Rhode Island general laws 24-5.13 as it relates to claims for damages arising from striking potholes in municipal streets, as amended by Counselor Shabbat.
Second.
Yeah, motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Council announcements, comments?
I had my three quick things, Mr. President. These are announcements, yes. At Financial Town Referendum, the voters of the town approved the disposal of the asset that we all refer to as a community center on Drudson Street. And I just wanted to assure the public that my office is working diligently towards finding that conclusion. And the language that was adopted is, quote unquote, "in the best interest of the town." So, I have interpreted that to mean that we would take into consideration items other than price in liquidating this asset, but that we will continue to use competitive processes to try to get the best deal for the town. So, there will be several stages of outreach to different parties to get different estimates of what things will cost and also to gauge interest. So, step one has been a letter that my office sent to all of the abutters to the property to see if there was any preliminary interest on their part. I think out of respect to the neighborhood, that would be one of the best steps we could take, is to see if anybody would be willing to pick it up on their own. Certainly, if there's more than one party interested, we would ask them to go through a competitive process. And we would certainly also, if we had only one bid, we'd have to consider our other options. The other thing I'm going to do is, I really do want to reach out to the community, those people who are in the business of demolition, especially those that are local, and get a rough estimate of what it would take to take this building down and a rough estimate of where any materials that need to be mitigated before they can be removed may be located. I think we all assume that there in the, there's a certain amount of asbestos in floor tiles in classrooms. That would be typical for a building of this age. Yeah, I think there might be just one layer of some... So, there might be some things that we need to look into, but I want to get a rough estimate of that. So, that process is underway. Secondly, an item is coming on your next agenda regarding the redesignation of the enterprise zone that the town of Tibbetson shares with the town of Portsmouth. And I'm only going to, I think many of you may have seen this process before. So, certain census blocks and census tracts are designated an enterprise zone by the state of Rhode Island. And then, for those businesses operating within the zone, there are certain benefits associated with increasing employment. And unfortunately, the state of Rhode Island, doing tax simplification, removed that from S Corps. So, it's only so-called Charter C, C corporations that benefit at this time. I'm going to recommend one amendment to the EZ, to the enterprise zone, because I believe it's important to remove census block known as 417.02, which is South Tibbetson. So, it's really everything from Bogomash Road south. And I have a couple of policy reasons for that. First of all, the purpose of enterprise zone legislation was to help those areas that have longstanding economic malaise and actually increasing unemployment in those industrial blighted areas all around the state of Rhode Island. And I don't know that South Tibbetson fits into that. But I also don't want to create an incentive. At this point, the incentive program that exists is for large corporations. And I'm not comfortable recommending that an incentive exist to develop in South Tibbetson. That's just my personal policy recommendation to the council. You can certainly alter that as you go along. But I think we need to be sensitive. I'm trying to be sensitive to the character of the community and the will of the community. And I think what we're really looking for here is from Bogomash Road north to be the focus of our attention. There are other incentives in place in South Tibbetson, specifically Four Corners is state-designated arts district. And those policies are working very well as they stand and are supporting the type of community that I think most residents would support. So, I want to back away from the enterprise zone designation in that part of town. My last announcement, there's several related issues. All tie around to streetlights. It's a little bit past due, but at the end of the year, we actually have to clear our books. Our streetlight expenditures were higher than the budget. And so, I had a transfer that I needed to get on your agenda for tonight and didn't make it. But it'll be on your agenda for two weeks from now. But I'm glad, in a way, we have a chance to discuss that tomorrow, I'll be getting a letter from a group known as Prism, which is a cooperative group... group that's been started by the Washington County Planning Council over on the other side of the bay. They're just gonna offer the town the possibility of options, under changes that have been made at the Public Utility Commission, for the town to consider buying its lights away from grid. Currently, the town pays $94 a year per streetlight from maintenance charges alone. Not to consider the electricity, electricity is actually a small part of what we pay for streetlights. And we're up to just about $170,000 this year, a total expenditure for all of our streetlights. This group has come up with an approach, which is opening the door for us to buy our own lights and have a maintenance contract that would be significantly lower than $94, actually talking about reducing that by over 75 percent. So, the opportunity here is, while there would be a purchase price to grid, and we're not buying the poles, and we're not buying the lines, we're buying the lights that hang on those poles. The opportunity would be that within our existing budget for street lighting, we would have enough money to actually buy the lights and still save money at the end of the year because we've saved money on the maintenance. And the open question will be whether or not to accelerate the conversion of those lights to LED lighting or not, because that's where the big expense, the real big expense would be. That will be on a future council docket. The letter I'll be signing tomorrow simply authorizes Prism to request of National Grid a final inventory of all the streetlights in town, and what the purchase price would be should we go forward. So, there is no binding commitment to the town, other than us requesting that final inventory from grid. So, that'll be on a future council docket.
I just have one comment to make on the Barker Community Center. When you go through this process, this is just my own two cents, the building, while not particularly architecturally astonishing, has elements that are, I think, have value to them, and so, any consideration for recovery or reuse of those materials is worth considering. I do have experience with sort of historic element recovery, and it's a big business, and, you know, there, it's probably a little less than 100 years old, but those materials are no longer available, et cetera, et cetera. It's, I'm a preservationist and a nerd when it comes to that stuff, so.
Actually, I want to show you I'm sensitive to that, so the schools of this period often had a number of unique built-in wooden elements and other.
Yeah, there was a lot of built-in stuff.
And to the extent that we can either save them for the town, or, you know, we use them in some way, that would certainly be the goal.
Okay. Council announcements, comments, and questions, discussion on annual volunteer appreciation night. When was that, last year?
It was October.
It was in October.
Yeah. And it was a Tuesday night, if I recall?
He did a Thursday one year, and he did a Friday one year.
It was a Friday.
It was a Friday last year.
It was Friday last year. It was.
So, is it the council?
Let's do it on Halloween.
Well, I have to tell you, I haven't spoken to Janice, I don't see her here tonight, but I have a heavy schedule with the election, and I have to really make sure she's feeling a second and give a hand, and I guess the expenses will come out with the council continuing to attend.
Yep. Any preference on the council?
I don't have my calendar with me, so I would say, go for it.
A Friday night.
Thursday or Friday.
It's gonna be heavy on what Janice can also handle, because.
Yeah, she's gonna be, yeah, she's gonna be handling it.
I'm gonna check with her and then come back with us with dates, see what's convenient for her.
I'll email you, whatever.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
One way or the other, it's gotta get them, so. Whether it's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
If you need help with anything, don't hesitate to ask Ed or John or Bill or someone.
I could help you. Well, it's just that we're busy, I can't.
Yeah. I can help.
Okay. Anything else, council?
Mr. President, I'd like to mention that the Arts Council invites the public to the Arts Reception, to be held on September 21st, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the town hall. This Arts Council is showing is for an exhibition named "Art from the Heart." It's an exhibition showing, showcasing the original watercolor works by the members of the Tiverton Senior Center Watercolor Class. It also, there is a display of homemade articles by the Tiverton Senior Senate Knitting and Quilters Class, that's down in the glass case. The show runs from now through October 30th. So, if people would like to join us on September 21st at the town hall from 2:00 to 4:00, we greatly appreciate having as many participants coming and viewing this beautiful works of art by our watercolor class. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the council?
Oh, wait a minute, one more. Kate, the CPAC Comprehensive Plan, rather than having a meeting on September 18th, there'll be a summary update by the CPAC Committee, delivered to the council for our September 22nd meeting. That's just an update.
So, there's not going to be a meeting on the 18th?
Correct, no meeting on the 18th. You get a free night.
I'm going to, don't tell my family.
We won't say a word, but it will, they'll give a, an update report.
What's your wife's number?
Let everybody know so that they have the night off, which impacts the October 20th schedule for a complete package for the council to review. So, that will probably be delayed. Okay. Thank you.
Oops, sorry. I just wanted to remind people that it's a busy end of summer weekend, this weekend in Tiverton, we have both Pardon, Country Day at Pardon Gray on Saturday, and the Singing Out Against Hunger, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, no, Thursday this year, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And I've requested good weather, so I'm reasonably assured that we'll have it, so.
I'm hearing it's gonna rain on Saturday.
Oh, you've got worse sources than mine.
Okay.
Okay. All right, town solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. President. First item is regarding Town of Tiverton versus James and Melissa Pelletier, Tiger Tree. Just wanted to give you a status update that the town has filed an appeal of the sentencing with the Rhode Island Supreme Court. We had to do that last week on the timing, because it was criminal, there was no delay in entering the judgment, and the 20 days was running, so we filed an appeal with the Supreme Court. We've also heard from the Supreme Court, apparently, Mr. and Mrs. Pelletier are proceeding with their own appeal of the underlying conviction. So, it will be going to the Supreme Court either way. That's, we'll also be proceeding now with the civil case in the meantime.
Okay.
Item two is memorandum, this is a copy of a memorandum provided to the building and zoning officials of the several towns that we represent, providing information about recent amendments to the state's medical marijuana law, which went into effect September 1st, and what essentially the state has now allowed, you probably saw it on D P W, they've allowed, they previously allowed individuals to cultivate marijuana plants if they had a card certifying the medical need for it. They now allow multiple cardholders to get together and cultivate in one space, with a variety of contradictory restrictions, including the fact that says if you're residential, there's no inspection by municipal officials, it's simply a licensed electrician. You must display an affidavit of compliance from that electrician prominently on the premises. Non-residential are otherwise subject to all of the zoning requirements, and actually require a state municipal inspection of the property. So, we've interpreted, and this is actually consistent with a position that's come up with another community where we had an enforcement action against property, they were using a basically a commercial property to grow a lot of it and process it. I believe that the distinction here is meant to be, the residential is if it's accessory to a dwelling unit, so that if one of the cardholders is living there on the site, then it's accessory. But if no one is living there, if it's just a commercial space, if none of, or if it's not one of the cardholders living there, that's what's non-residential. So, at least at this point, until we get further clarification, either from the Attorney General or a court case, that's the position that we'll be taking on it.
I just have a question. I know that a lot of states have put in medical marijuana, but it's still federally illegal, correct?
Yes.
So, I'm just making that point. Okay. Town clerk, I know you have nothing to do in the next few days.
Yeah, I apologize, but I was in the office listening tonight. I can't remember what I heard, but this, I just want to make a reminder to everybody that tomorrow is the statewide primary. We have polling locations set, anyone who has any question about where they're going to vote can simply call the town clerk's office at 625-6703. The polls open at 7:00 in the morning to 8:00. We are using five locations. The V F W, if you are in District 3301 or 3302, we're using the community, I'm sorry, Country View Estates Community Room on Hurst Lane, that is for District 3303, which is where you always vote if you're in that district. We are using the Ranger Elementary School on North Brayton Road, if you are in District 3304, which is where you would normally vote anyway. We're using Sandywood Farms, if you are in 3305, which is where you would normally vote anyway. And we are using Tiverton High School for precincts 3306 and 3307. That is a combined one, and it curtails most of South Tiverton, from Bogomash Road, south.
Would you have voted at Amicable?
One would have.
Yeah.
Oh, seven would have.
Right.
We do not use Amicable Church on a primary.
So, if you voted at Amicable, you would go to the high school.
Right. If on your general election, you would be voting at Amicable Church, you have to go to the high school for this primary. Okay? Anyone who has any problems during the day on it, we have, it's actually been a little bit more confusing this year, the state's put on a lot more requirements, but you can just call the town clerk's office, they've been assisting people for the last couple of weeks, so just give a call here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2, Ray litigation, Town of Tiverton versus James and Melissa Pelletier.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2, Ray collective bargaining, I A F F and I B.